Good morning, Young County Commissioners's Court now come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Young County Commissioners's Court, Monday, September 10th, 2018. It is 9:30 a.m. in this courtroom. If it's convenient, if you'll please stand and allow the Commissioner, Mr. Rogers, to offer any courtesy of the ladies.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just ask you to be with us today. We just ask you to bless all of those present. Father, we just ask you to guide and direct us, give us wisdom on issues facing us today. Father, we just ask you to, uh, lay your healing hand on those that are sick and those that are ill. And we just ask you to comfort those that are lost loved ones. Fathers, we come to this week of nine eleven, we just ask you to, uh, watch over those and appreciate those that, uh, are in harm's way to protect our rights. Father, we just ask you to, uh, guide and direct us and forgive us where we fail you and, uh, again, work your will in our lives today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the great Texas and want to say, under God, one and indivisible.
For the record, uh, this meeting was published, posted, and planned according to time required and that all members of the court are present. I will introduce out number three, which is like the public hearing on, of Young County, of Young County's FY19 budget. It's here at 9:30 a.m. It is 9:30 16 a.m. In this meeting, we will, of course, most adopt the budget. We must then, uh, consider tax increase ratification. And we must consider the adoption of tax rates in two different parts, one being the, uh, debt rate service and maintenance and operations rate. This is a public hearing. While in fact, anyone who wishes to, to make comments, to make any statement they wish or respond, uh, with regard to the budget that we're adopting, uh, or that we're paying off. This year's budget, uh, will raise more property taxes, total property taxes than last year's budget by three hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars, which is a four point three six percent increase. And of that, approximately a hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars is tax revenue to be raised from new properties that's been added to the road this year. The, um, tax year 2018 total rate that's been proposed was seven nine nine three two three. That has been locked back to a total rate of point seven five eight six one three. Our effective rate is point seven three five nine oh two. Our rollback rate is point seven nine nine three two three. And, um, we have a human old rate of point six seven two nine three one and a debt rate of point oh eight five six eight two, together to make that point seven five eight six one three, which would technically fund the budget that we will present here in this court today. This budget, uh, total budget is up four percent or four hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars, but that's in total budget, that's, that's not pursuant to the tax rate. We've already stated those figures before, the taxes, it'll be increased in the percentage that, that they are increased. Our last year, our current, current year still, uh, the tax rate that we, uh, assess to our current budget is point seven five one three zero zero. That's, that's only budget that we're currently operating on that. What we're proposing here is a budget for FY19. Physical year will begin October the first. We must do these things before we charge the tax rate to our constituents. Now, offer the floor to anyone that wishes to speak. Come forward, state your name. Come forward and state your name.
As soon as you said it, I just would like to remind y'all that we, I believe the people understand why you need to raise it, but I want y'all to understand the citizens of Graham are not getting a pay raise. We're not getting an increase in our salaries. We're not getting an increase in what we make to pay them. You understand what I'm saying? We have the hospital tax, we have the school tax, we have your tax, up, up, up. But do you know what's not going up, up, up? The amount of income coming to us, the people. Hey, people are out there hurting. So when you make your decision, please consider your citizens who are working hard and barely paying their bills. And when you do this, our lives, where I work become longer, more people are in need. Look at the homes that are for sale. Look at the homes where I live, thirteen of them within one block. Do you understand? I mean, I'm sorry, if I got my money, if the citizens gotta pay raises, we would be more than glad and be happy to help the people out, to help you guys out. The money's not here for the citizens, that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make some kind of statement?
My name is Mark Vaughnitt. And we took out a, we have agreed, agreed to the seller beer to raise money. That's a fifty cents. Sales tax, fifty five cents, sales tax.
We did one eighth percent of any, uh, taxes we're charging.
Okay, so, is that not our money? On sell alcohol. I mean, it's like we keep raising taxes, I mean, you say, we'll sell this, we'll sell that, and we'll increase funds and get the other still for money. And y'all are asking for a raise another year. But y'all are asking for a raise where none of us have had a raise yet.
Then we had our sales tax, those sales tax are also calculated into the mix on our calculation. We do our rollback effective rates, so, and they are to reduce property taxes.
Well, another question I have is, why do you think y'all would qualify for a raise when some of you who are, have had raises yet because they're kind of ten-four raises? And y'all have a fourteen thousand dollar a year budget for your vehicles and for your commission for your vehicles?
Not all of us.
For your vehicles and for your cell phone?
Not all of us.
For your vehicle, the cell phone, y'all use?
I say not all of us have it.
No, I said, I said commission, sorry. I don't understand, y'all can justify fourteen thousand dollars a year for cell phone, maybe? Like I drive Cadillacs?
We don't actually justify our own mileage, this vehicle's a three twelve.
Okay, is it your personal vehicle?
It is.
Okay, so...
We don't, we don't own county vehicles, nothing.
Okay, so we reimburse the information for vehicle? At what, thirty cents a mile?
Fifty four.
Fifty four cents, okay.
I don't know whether that, depends on the miles you're, that is a flat rate that's paid to us for this. Takes in, uh, maintenance, cost of car, cost of driving, fuel, insurance, all paid for, buts.
So that fifty four cents, uh, that's your gas payment?
I really don't think that that is based on the fifty four cents. But then when we reimburse for miles, that's what we're reimbursing then.
Okay.
Our monthly, our monthly stop in Florida, we do...
And y'all pay for it?
No, that fourteen, that's a twelve hundred a month.
You see, if you don't, that's fourteen hundred, fourteen down a year, don't tell me, well, we spend, we spend.
On our way to court, uh, and courage to the court, the commissioners to justify that on mileage law, the way I've done it, yeah, but...
We need it, we're not here. I guess he had a go.
To justify a full thing.
I, I do it every year for my taxes. It, it's, it's a sixty-one mile round trip for me to go to my house to, to my county party every day. So, and I do that, and I couple my oil changes and tires. I do that.
And then we got a hundred and thirty-some miles of road.
I'd be happy to have the county buy us all of it and ensure, maintain, keep it up by the blue bar.
Well, you might need to for the lumber.
Yeah. How about that?
And we'll always, some of us, some of us three percent to one percent.
But y'all, how much is your percentage to pay raise that you're...
It's less than one percent.
But there's people that are here to have a raise for years.
It's really bad.
And you're asking for us to DPO, or maybe it's just not right. I'm sorry, I own this for everything, but like somebody else is saying, houses sell everywhere. Y'all are driving people out of this town, y'all already said.
Well, if I can get this one, we're not the only cause.
I understand.
Or there's contributing factor, maybe, but don't try, try us, you're the only cause.
No, you're not, because of the hospital board's one raise. And the school board, they're here, they have a price taxes, a tax rate, can you?
Well, maybe not, but tax exists.
Yes, they do.
I mean, if, if this court stayed on the same tax rate that we have, that's funding our current budget right now, it'd still be taxing us. Now, uh, you're correct that it's a little bit lower than what it would be, but not very much, but, uh, each entity is, or have, they have, they are having their, uh, tax increase hearings, two public hearings each have had to, because their taxes are also cut. So we're, we're not the only contributing factor here. We are one.
We are approximately seventeen percent of what you pay in tax in the county, okay? Now, if you don't, if you live in the county and you don't pay a city tax, our percentage goes up, obviously, because the city's no longer part of the total. But the other public hearings are just as important as the county budget hearing, so far as, what are you doing with that money? How much are you getting reimbursed from the state? How much are you not getting reimbursed from the state? Where, where are your revenues headed? You know, what are you doing with the money? And we, we, like Mr. Sercidi said, we take the taxpayer into consideration every regular item in our budget. We try to keep as much out of your pocket as possible. But really, revenues are very important. Now, in this last quarter, we did have an increase in sales taxes, but this is a new trend in sales tax that hasn't occurred, and I don't know that you can actually give credit to half of all sales because of, it could just be the fact that people are spending more money. Maybe like you said, didn't being able to drive out of town, spend their money anymore.
Well, thanks.
Because of gasoline cars, they're having to spend it here, which is a good and priceless , sure, sales tax, oil. So there's a lot of contributing factors that go into your budget. I know previous budgets to these, three, four years ago, when oil hit its belly, all the oil properties weren't working, so we weren't collecting as much money from them. So you, as a homeowner, had to pay the bills, you know?
But when we set our budget, we, we can't ask for more than what we got, you know? And y'all are asking for a raise and increase in the budget, that's just not right.
We're asking for someone with a hundred thousand dollar ask to make that a dollar.
I'm talking about no person, and, um, you're asking for a raise as a commissioner. That doesn't seem right, ask for a raise, you can't balance the budget. That's for you, not for...
Those are the battles.
Not a request for a raise. Not, not my move, so, sorry.
It's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Courtney Shillett with Water and Race here. Um, so I have something to add, it's like she brought up the budget and those raises. So on the proposed 2018 budget, y'all's total, including your fourteen, whatever, was fifty four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four, but this year, y'all show that y'all would lack fifty-six thousand, one fifty-four, and that's not an increase with cell phone and card, which shows that y'all are each getting a twelve hundred and twenty dollar raise for a year, almost five thousand dollars, and not even increased taxes.
Hundred dollars a month.
I get that, I get that, I can do a lot with a hundred dollars, my house paid one of a hundred dollars. I'm a full-time student, I have a budget. If my expenses are more than my budget, I have to decrease expenses, I don't get to increase them.
That's why they are...
Two days under budget, you're raising your incoming money to meet it. And I also noticed that y'all, which is great, y'all were able to all have, every, all four precincts had money left over. So if y'all have money left over, why do you need more money coming in? Y'all are obviously, I mean, obviously, y'all set a budget last year, no way you can stick to it, so if there's money left over, why do y'all need to make this increase?
We always, we always try to budget enough money to operate the precincts, but we try to spend money to have some left over. It's not good to spend every penny you have budgeted.
Yeah, exactly. But if you're having a large amount left over, then you're obviously got enough.
That's going back into your bank account, general fund account, so...
Yeah, but it's going in my general banking account when you raise taxes, so...
Right, then you gotta understand that...
I know y'all aren't the only ones, I don't blame y'all, but I think it's a, a total issue that we've sat there and let hospital and county and city raise taxes. Now, I literally have a coworker that was looking at moving to Graham, would have been great, they started looking, they were like, never mind, we'll stay in Scotland, y'all's taxes are guts. I mean, that's a problem, Graham is a beautiful town, and we have such a neat community, and we have people selling their homes because they can't afford it, because they don't want to move here because our tax rates are higher than everybody else around, and it's nice when you have such a awesome place.
Well, I don't know what the, the tax rate in Scotland, the city of Scotland might be, but I know that when they live here, they've got five, they got to pay a city tax as well.
Right, right, but overall, our taxes, and it's, it's a elective, that's what I'm saying, is it's a communitative problem, but if we don't do something about it, we're going to start losing more people.
I just can't, if you a couple pieces of paper that speaks to what is inflating these budgets?
Yes.
Things that the state tells us to do, that we have to do?
Yes.
It's the law, our regulatory, we have to do that, and that's adding a great deal to your taxes. If when they made a law that stipulates that we've got to do something at the county level, if they'd provide revenue for that, we wouldn't have to pass a burden of pay for that mandate to you.
And I understand that, there's expenses, I work in hospital, I get, we're doing the hospital tax, I mean, we've got expenses, but also, I know, I know we don't get raises right now because we're in the hole. You can't ask for a raise when you're in the hole, is my point. I think that's what's making people mad, like it's, it's bad enough when our taxes grow up, but when we see, oh, you're getting a raise, but you're taking more out of my pocket, it's infuriating. Thank you.
I'd like to address the, uh, budget for the road and bridge, uh, months will be negative this year, because that's been all my money, just the weather situation and the road conditions and all that, so I'm down to zero right now. I have the most road to precinct three, but I have the less money, so I operate the most efficient out of these three, uh, which, uh, I do, I do my part to try to, you gotta start with your own budget, trying to decrease it, so you can do an overall county budget. And as far as, it was voted on in this commissioner's court to give up, basically, a three percent raise straight across the border, twelve hundred dollars to every employee, that included elected officials. And, uh, I disagree with that, and all these guys, ever since I've been here, they know my speech, when they bring up elected officials getting a raise, because half of them run for reelection this year, knowing exactly what the salary was, what the benefits was. And some of them are going to take office and already get a raise and then insert the day in. There's two or three in that situation. So I have no problem with giving hourly employees a raise because we have to compete with the private market too. I live in, not only, we have to compete with two factories over there that pay really good wages. And, and their job descriptions on the road and bridge, I believe they are a little underpaid. You know, I'm not gonna say I got the best employees and all that, but for the job description for what they do, conditions they work in, they are underpaid as well, because I agree with the sheriff's department, I believe they're underpaid. The ones on the road, getting shot at, with trouble, and I believe they are underpaid and deserve a raise. But I'm totally against giving twelve hundred dollars straight across to elected officials, but it only takes three to get anything passed on this one. But yet, when it comes to newspaper, Facebook, and all that, like y'all come today, commissioners did this, commissioners did that, well, I am the commissioner, and I get locked in with a lot of this, so here I am, gonna speak, speak up against it, but I wasn't up for giving elected officials raises.
My name's Kathy Shillett.
Mary, it's you.
Why do you think you need a raise? What, what's, what's the purpose of getting a raise?
For asking me personally, I have my own budget that won't have raises.
So you, you're not, you're not taking a raise if it's...
No, I'm getting some, let me speak to that just, just a little bit. Uh, this, this room here is the, I guess you could say, the, this is the higher level decision-making part of county government. If there are raises given, uh, to keep that, um, division between levels of employment, it's necessary that the elected officials get the same raises that the employees get to keep that vision in there. Otherwise, uh, in time, your secretary will be making more than you are that you make the decision, or your first time road hang will be making more than you are that you make the decision. That doesn't make sense, that doesn't make sense in industry.
Most people haven't had a raise, the average working class. I've not had raises in, I've never seen, so...
I disagree with Mr. Rogers a little bit on that, uh, in that if there are raises given, it needs to be straight across the board, uh, otherwise, we're going to have to go into some different kind of program. You can't hire somebody in, in ten or twelve years and have you replace, and that's happened here since, since I've been on court. The first ten years, first ten years I was on the court, we didn't get any raises, there weren't no raises given, we, of course, we were broke, didn't have any money at that time at all.
Sounds like we still are.
I, I appreciate your statement, I can understand that, and, uh, but I can't completely agree with Mr. Rogers on this statement, the, the cause of the different levels of employment that you have. You got the worker level, and you've got the mid-bandage level, and you've got the elder decision makers, so, uh, it's just like the business industry or corporation or anything like that, you, you, there's levels of pay that go along with different levels. You can't expect to stay there forever in that same salary. Something's gonna happen, you must get a raise sometime, or you, just like you people that say, um, you know, you, you don't see your, uh, bank account go up, or your check increase, or something like that, well, these people are, are, that work here, a few people do, you know, so, and flipping, including the decision makers. There's time, you know, there's time for increase, not just in time, no, it's time for no increase.
I don't think this is a time for increase, we have too many other things going on. Most of us don't have an increase here.
Okay, or you're not go to the different, other different entities and like the same argument.
Sure, I don't have a problem with that, because, I mean, if we all, cost of living went up, it'd be wonderful, but like they said, we have no more income coming in, but we have a lot more going out, and so...
Ms. Shillett?
Yes.
Are you aware that in the last legislative session, that their budget stipulated appraisals of school are going to have to go up fourteen percent over the next two years in order for the schools to gather the same amount of money that we're garnering prior to their budget?
Yes.
In other words, they have got the school budgets.
Yes.
All right, when the school's appraisals go up fourteen percent, what does that do to your other taxes? They go up to...
They go up too.
That's right, I gave you those pieces. Call them down there, tell them to stop. Stop spending our money for us, let us spend it on you locally. We've also got...
I think money should stay local.
It should.
But I'm sitting in...
We should control it locally.
I mean, I was in the Waco area this weekend, and I said, and listen to parents tell me, they may live in this district because taxes are lower, but they send their kids to other schools, so, you know, they'll, they'll send their kids over there, they're not fighting for what they want for their children, the, and...
Be more thoughtful.
I have young kids, I want them to stay right here locally. If you keep going up on taxes, like they said, people are moving out of town right and left, I mean, we've had doctors leave you to work in other counties, they can't afford, some of them, I mean, not all of them, but, you know, taxes are just going up, it's unreal.
I agree, taxes are high.
Yeah, all taxes, not just county, but all taxes. And I have in-town property and I have out-of-town property, so I see the school taxes, I see the hospital taxes, and I see all the other things.
You probably should have, of course, if you live in cities, you probably have four or five different taxing areas.
Honey, I live in Amherst, our taxes go up every year.
Well, in Amherst, you'll have...
Every year.
Over at least, the taxes get...
Well, I object to it, I don't think it's time for a raise, and I don't think you should vote no.
How much was the total rate? They were putting it down.
Point oh oh seven three five.
No, but I'm trying to, for dollar wise on the increase, one hundred and thirty thousand?
Forty-five thousand.
One forty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I, I would go, I'd go with this one, right?
I'm thinking two big foot off.
Well, we've done that before, and each time we do that, you're getting there, or in there, or in there, not a lot if you're out there to begin with, except if you might play him, so the race was some allowances, um, place up, something like that.
We're having to drive over here to just get taxed. We don't even have a tag office in Amherst, it's all...
I've been on the, it takes a while for them.
It's been a couple months, several months now.
I know, I can't get anybody's...
They may need to look for a new employee, if she's not there for asking what's going on.
It's, then the, it's gonna be closed again, it's, it takes like three months to trade.
I think that's what the manager's doing, is trying to...
I mean, I'm doing the best I can, I just don't have to be patient.
And it's that too, if I work for the hospital, and I know they don't give raises, that's the hospital's fault, they don't give raises, I don't, I don't, that's the best opportunity right now, but a lot of people...
That's common sense, I mean, you're not gonna give a raise...
A lot of people going to witch calls and forward, oh, and wait for to get jobs now because they pay them, so, I mean, I...
Paid raises... I understand, pay raises.
I live, I live like you, trust me, I don't have no other business. This is, this is my full-time job. And so I live like you. My news, like I said, my view of twenty twelve Chevrolet pickup outside. So I understand.
I drive like twelve too, so I understand. But there's just no, like I say, if we had a cost of living, it may be one thing, but we don't. We all have, no more income coming in.
If you have any potential, look around, the only possibility is to raise their.
Yeah, I know, I hope trust will happen. You got it, you got it. That's all I can add.
Isn't that seventy five, that's the top end of hospital?
Well, Almere, Almere had their election, district election that was created in nineteen ninety, they set their, they set their own cap to twenty five cents. So what can a camp there be this week of election? The election is working, and the proposal will be the race between the camp, between the state legislative camp. They set their own cap when they created.
Do they need more operating money?
Yes.
You wanna build a hospital?
Even though we don't have any doctors, with that three leave in the past two months.
Are people signing that petition?
Can I speak to her?
Come on up, gotta get up there close.
I wanna go back a little bit, you were speaking about the Indians. And the Indians, you know, are raised completely over the board. And she was asking why you guys thought you deserved so much. The Indians are the ones that do the work. I'm sorry, but you Indians and the people out there are the ones that make you look good.
That's right.
Okay, they need a pay raise. They're the ones that deserve the raise. And those Indians are the ones who are struggling to pay their bills. Okay, and their salaries are the ones. But you take the police officer and a sheriff, they're protecting your life.
Okay, so you're already, already.
I'm saying, cut that budget, or maybe you guys don't get a raise, and y'all give back to our community and give the Indian raises. Give the police department, give the sheriff a raise. Give these guys, because they're making you guys look good, and y'all just give a little bit back.
Then you're suggesting, you're suggesting that the Indians make more than the chief?
No, but I'm suggesting they make a lot more, if you compare their income to yours, look at the difference.
Yeah, okay, I understand that.
Okay, that's what I'm suggesting, that you do pay the sheriff more, I mean, the police department, the Indians more. Because they're the ones doing the labor, and without them, you can't do it. And y'all look at y'all's job, and y'all might be the chiefs, but you're nothing without those Indians.
Well, actually, the sheriff makes more than we do.
And they need to get the raise, it's not you guys, I'm sorry.
Actually, the sheriff makes more than we do.
Does he? Well, I'm talking about the police officers on the street, the one that was.
The deputy sheriff, I agree, they should be making forty, forty-five thousand a year. I agree.
But that's my opinion, I'm sorry.
They should be making what Palpeno County's.
Yeah, but that's my opinion, I'm sorry, but I do believe that the Indians make you guys look good. And if y'all have to give a raise, give it to those little guys, and y'all give a little bit back to your community.
You heard last week, too.
Yeah, the sheriff's office, sheriff's office should be making what Palpeno County makes. I wish, I swear I wish we could, just be the ex-officer, I wish we could.
Palpeno County's.
The third, the third, they make a lot.
He's probably working.
There's one thing that we can do in this county that will help in this tax situation. And that's to get industry to try to come here, that will help lower these taxes. It won't only lower the taxes, but it'll also increase the job market. And maybe some of these jobs, if you can increase your base for awesome. That's what it takes. That's why I said, you go from here out west, and all these small counties are doing the same thing we're doing. Trying to survive. And we hear everything y'all saying. But also, we need to know, at what point do you want us to cut our budget? And what stuff do you want us to cut out in order to lower this? Because everything that we cut, we've shaved on this for three years to try to keep taxes low, and there was several years that we didn't do anything. But there was ten years, like John talked about, that they didn't get a raise. And when you ten years behind the times, the city was still getting raises ten years, we didn't give raises. So that's what our guys are in the backseat also. But that's what we need to do, we need to get the industry here that will generate revenue, that will help us in our tax, taxes.
They will come, if you have the highest tax rate in the state of Texas, one of the top of the towns.
And if they do come, y'all give them an incentive, allow lowering their taxes. And you can't do that, you can't do that.
Sydney, so, I was here at your last meeting. The first thing I'm gonna say is, Mike, I remind you that I didn't wanna come to these meetings 'cause I get all upset.
Why did you come?
And I do stipulate that we should have evening meetings because more people can come, more people can. I again took off from my work to come up here, which cuts into my bag. But I feel strong, very strong, in that everyone should come to these meetings, this room should be filled. And you can't do that, a lot of people, they kick it off. I'm my own boss, and I took off to do the duties. I strongly suggest that you gentlemen have evening meetings. When it comes to the city giving their opinion, I understand if y'all wanna get together during the day when you're arguing, you're cussing and discussing. But when it comes to us coming up here, I think the city deserves, you need to see how many people feel like this. And I agree that we need industry in this town. We are, we are just, we're dying, Graham's dying very slowly. And I don't know personally how to bring industry in, I have no clue how to do that. But I hope that you gentlemen can talk other people into opening the doors for industry to come to you. But again, I also have to state that it's gotta be hard for y'all to say you're gonna get a raise. I can't see how you can do it with a straight face. And with us having these elder entities that are raising unbelievably amount of money, I have to state, this has nothing to do with the county, but the hospital was gonna raise their taxes the first time. They give you this number, point three five, up to point seven five. Now they're going to go above that. Those entities alone are strangling the people in this town. I hate to see y'all raise your arms. I know everybody's got a budget, everybody's hurting, everybody. But you've got to look deeper, guys, you've got to. I know that y'all have money put back. If you have to go to zero, you have to go to zero, or you have to go to zero. Or put it all in a pot and spread it out. When you are in this kinda situation, you can't say, well, I've got this and I'm holding on to it, when this says I don't have any. If you put it all in a pot, hold hands, great friends, and keep the county good. There's too many people hurting, hurting bad, we can't afford this. This is only the first meeting I'm going to, I'm going to the hospital, I'm going to every meeting they have, and I'm putting it across the board, people have to show up. But people can't take off if you do mornings, you have to have evenings. And if you're afraid to face the evening crowd, and that shows to me that you really don't care.
I think Sydney, I think the city has their first hearing, you know, what time it was. I think it was at eight.
Uh, they tried to.
And then the hospital had theirs at noon?
Had theirs at noon, and then the next one at six.
Uh, the school, when do they have their meeting?
Like, first thing in the morning, but I think.
That's all.
Uh, there's one tomorrow, I'm going to six o'clock.
Six o'clock, which one?
I believe it's the hospital.
Hospital, that's American League.
I'm scared, the last one I heard, they don't have eight people there.
No, we're fifty people, there are fifty people there.
Do you think they moved it to the ALB, to accommodate more people?
I'm telling you, people have to have the opportunity to come, say they're how they feel.
I want, I want to reiterate that, yes, we may be a contributor to the problem, but we're, we're not the problem.
I know that, but I'm saying, I understand, you guys have to make a budget. Everybody does, everyone in this room has to have some kind of budget. You all have a certain amount of money, but if you're getting more money than what the people can contribute to it, and the other entities that are going, oh my gosh, off skyrocketing. I just wanna, I, you know, I'm looking on the House of Rastialin, I wonder, is there an agenda for this? Is there a reason? What is the reason that anybody would want homes to close? There has to be an agenda. Have y'all, do y'all know? Have y'all talked to anybody?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
I shall, believe me, I shall.
I love my community.
But I want, I want y'all to stand up, put in these halls, stir it up, spread it out, play like you're a great big cake, cover it. This is very important. I'm sorry, I, I'm telling you, I hate coming to these meetings because they get all stirred up, because I feel like you've already made your decisions, and I'm talking to a wall. Might as well just bang my head against the wall, and I don't like that feeling. But I feel like, on the other hand, if I don't come up here and join people that do stake their business, and say, well, nobody showed up, I guess we can do it. Bottom line is, this county can't afford to spend more money because the people can't. We don't have industry. Obviously, the liquor bill didn't pay what it was supposed to. I wish y'all, I wish everybody could have a raise, I don't. It's just, the bottom line, there's not enough money to go around right now to try to raise it. There's just not, you can look everywhere and see that everybody's hurt. And if you feel like you're driving O-12 this bad, then, you know, be thankful that you have O-12.
I love my people, I'm not complaining about it, I'm just saying that it's not like what.
Well, I go thirty miles round trip from my house to my business. That's just going home and back, that's not counting, you know, any little side trips.
Oh, I understand.
So nobody's paying me extra, and I do not have insurance. I haven't had insurance in so long, I can't tell you. That's clearly not what it's been since I have had any form of insurance. I'm glad that some people get it. But I can't afford to pay you guys more for what I don't have. Thank you for your understanding.
My pleasure. Is there anybody else who wishes, wished favor?
If I might say something too. This meeting, when we're finalizing this budget, this budget didn't just happen in a dark room, where we threw numbers up there and said, let's see if we can get this much more out of it. This has been going on since the month of June. We have gone over every line. Most of this budget is because of either inflation or because of new mandates that's been put out to us that we've got to pay for. A lot of it has to do with your judicial system, and we can't dispose of the judicial system. We are the bottom rung of the ladder for state government. And the state government treats us like that. What we should be is your local governments supplying the services that you need as a citizen. You need someone to keep up with deeds of record. You need someone to keep up with marriage license. You need someone to keep up with birth certificates. You need someone to keep up with wheels. You need someone to keep up with the courtroom when somebody does a terrible crime and ends up being brought to court and tried. We pay for all of that, we pay for the JP to collect the money for speeding tickets. And those various functions that they did, pay for two JP's. Pay for all the staff necessary to support all of that. We've got a county clerk that does a lot of work, we've got a district clerk that keeps up with all those courtroom tasks. We've got a tax assessor collector that sells you license plates and keeps up with all those registrations and fees for all those various things that go on. What I'm saying is that your county government is a very busy government supplying lots of services to you. Those roads out there end up taking the brunt of what's left over. We fight to get what we can to put on those roads. Now, I've got a hundred thousand dollar budget for gravel. And I put at least a hundred thousand dollars worth of gravel on our roads. I've got used equipment, I own one piece of new equipment in my yard. Where others find it more expensive to buy new equipment because of warranties and what have you, that's their way of running their precincts, and that's fine. I think that used equipment does just fine when we don't use it any more than the opportunity we have to use it. I got three motorators out on the road today, one man in a truck hauling gravel to where there's a mud hole in the road. Take that back to my roads, I'll have any mud holes, but they got sauce spots on them. Okay, you can get back and forth to town on these county roads in Young County. They're not poor roads, they're dusty and they're rough sometimes, but we get a lot of dry weather. We get a lot of traffic. We're getting more and more people moving out into the country using those services. We support the ambulance service, we support your volunteer fire department. We support so many things, and we should look through the budget, look at that line item, but we went through every one of those line items to determine how much money we could afford to put into there. And each department head had an opportunity to come to this court and say, this is what I need, and this is why I need it. I wish some of you would be sitting in the audience then, but you got jobs. Okay, that has to go on without a great deal of people having an opportunity to do that. And I have no problem with having an evening meeting. None whatsoever, I have no problem with you standing up here and saying whatever it is you wanna say. You are a resident of this country, and you're a resident of Texas and Young County, and you can have the right to say anything you want to say. Be it informed or uninformed. But I just need you to know that this number did not just jump out of the hat, see how much more can we get, it's how much more do we need to pay the bills. So I appreciate y'all coming, really good.
Need to put a comment?
And, and I saw one of the. I don't, I don't know if the public knows, a needed thing, which is the sheriff's office in our jail. We put, is it eight hundred or a million dollars into their budget? It's.
The jail, the dispatch and the SO.
Two point six.
Two point six.
Two point six million dollars, and just that. So I don't know if people understand that, and we have to have that. We have to have protection for our citizens, we have to have them housed, inmates, and. So, I mean, we, we try to even help ourselves by going out to Baylor County and Brockmore County and saying, hey, we'll hold your prisoners, and, and we charge them to pay, you know, we charge them and they pay us. So, I mean, we're trying in every little, little way to make a little extra money like that. And like, Jewish Wally said a while ago, man, businesses would be great here. And look, look at all what the city of Graham has. They had the old Haxel building out there with nothing in it, and the old GMI building with nothing in it. Boy, it'd be, that'd be so awesome to get some industry in here, it really would, but I don't know.
I'll just make one little short statement regarding to the proposed budget tax rate and the taxes here. Like, Young County does tax a lot. I'm not speaking about the Young County government, I'm talking about all of the entities in Young County cumulatively. It's a, it's difficult, and I understand the dilemma that's there. Reiterate that we're in this as part of that problem. Maybe a smaller part than a larger part. Your school districts are gonna take fifty-four percent of the taxes that are, are paid in this county property taxes. Your city's about sixteen percent, county seventeen percent. And other special districts, like the college district, maybe another one or two, will take about thirteen percent. So we, we're not the entire problem, we're just a little part of it. The increases, the big increases that are in this budget goes to law enforcement detention. Other, the next is the road and bridge department, and. Uh, and the third would probably be the pay increases that we've got in our payroll. Amounts to a hundred dollars a month. So, that's where, that's where the increases from this budget, from last budget, uh, lay. So, I, I can empathize with you. I pay the taxes too.
I want to say something too. The state used to pay sixty percent for the school taxes. Suffice sixty percent of it. They don't do that anymore. It's around thirty-eight or less. And if y'all had figured out yet what's going on is, the state is making us look like the bad guy. And they're doing a less responsibility that they should be taking bearing the burden on and putting it on us. That's what's taking place right now. And I'd, I'd encourage everyone to get ahold of your representative, get ahold of your senator, and let them know that y'all had enough. But when they mandate this stuff down, just like what Mike said, we have to pay it. We have to do it. We have to find the money somewhere to do it. And we, we don't have any other way of generating cash flow through the state. If you're the city, the city has all kinds of ways to generate cash. A lot more than what we do. And last, if somebody brought up the, what the, the beer, beverage mix deal was, it's brought in twenty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars so far this year. That's our part. That's not much. You know, half cent in the sales tax versus eight and a quarter or six and a quarter, a lot of difference in that. But we're thankful for everything we can get to help all set one across. I think sales tax is one of the most various taxes there is out there, because everybody's paid it.
Yeah. To complement what he said with regard to property taxes, the state cannot assess and they cannot collect property tax, but our legislature does by the budgets that they approve, uh, the things that they won't fund, force those issues back to your local governments and your school districts. So, that's the bottom line, where the big part of our increase is not to say that we're completely innocent on, on all of that, and not to say that we can't use less money, that we can't reduce the budget. But those are, those are things that do happen at the state level that the state doesn't get. They just, they're just not doing their part in funding education and unfunded mandates. And this didn't start recently. It's been going on a long, long time. But they can disguise that to make your local entities, cities, school districts, counties, other entities look... They can make them look like the ones that are forcing them. And we're not forcing it. We're, they're just forcing us to do it.
If you'll get online, look up Judge Whitmire, is that his name?
Whitley?
Whitely.
From Tarrick County?
From Tarrick County.
Liam?
Glenn Whitely. And read his articles on the state side of it, on the school part of it. We sent under him down there at Austin this last week. He gave you some more information about what goes on in the school side of the taxes.
What we need is school planning reform. If Harris County, Barrett County, Travis County, and Dallas County could, they would run your business here in Young County, and they're trying. And the legislature down there is giving them every opportunity to do it. If they could move everybody out of Young County, move away, and come to their city, where their tax base is growing way beyond ours, obviously, where they can have the last year's tax rate, but they got gigands of dollars more because their tax base is bigger. That is their, that is their solution to the problem. Move everybody up and down I-35. That's reading your transportation money doesn't come out here to one fourteen and three eighty. It goes into Fort Worth to build those mega tollways and those clover leaves, try to get that commuter from his house in Frisco to his job in downtown Dallas fifteen minutes quicker than that hour fifteen minutes that he's been having to drive. So, where your money is going and what's being stipulated out here for us to spend, I know a lot of you probably aren't familiar with the Sandra Bland Act. That has changed our jail system tremendously, and it's very expensive. Courthouse security has been, sounds like a good idea, doesn't it? Keep everybody safe while in the courthouse from all these crazies that show up here? It's expensive to do that. And you're going to hear something this next legislative session that says, property tax reform. We're going to limit what the counties can tax you. Well, that's fine if you've got an expanding tax base where you don't have to worry about that. What they forget to tell you is people like Houston, Dallas, they always had the option of lowering their tax rate. They don't have to charge that much money. They also don't have to build one billion dollar football stadiums and skating parks and various other things that they spend money on. Fifty-two million dollars high school football stadiums. Now, you don't think that affects school taxes? And they say they're not getting as much from the state? Well, I know we're not. And we're not raising our tax rate at the school level, but we're still doing a lot of improvements around here. You know, we're still doing some visible things that you're saying, thought the teachers wanted raises? Why didn't that money go into a teacher's raise? And if they give all the teachers raises, it's going to cost you more school taxes. Well, just know the dynamics of this whole thing. We're working as hard as we can to keep that barrier away from the door while we're trying to operate a county efficiently so we can supply you with the services that you deserve. You deserve to be able to come up here and get your kid's birth certificate when you need it for him to play sports. You need a passport to go on your cruise. You need to file a deed of record from your parents' decease and they've given you this money. You need that recorded. You need the JP to find people who are not abiding by the law or who owes you money on rent. There's all kinds of things that we're paying for that benefit you each and every day that you, you may or may not see. And you got to remember, we're taking care of residents from Loveville to Eliasville to Rock Creek to Long Island. I mean, we've had that whole, everybody's entitled. And most of the taxes paid by you city folks go for things outside your, your front door. County roads are paid for, but you, that half a million dollars that you're talking about in each one of these precincts goes to those roads out of your pocket. Now, do we need better roads? Boy, some people chew on me about better roads. And it takes money to have better roads. Takes material and men. Talk about the, so as you talk about the men, uh, where can you get a machinery operator that can drive a front-end loader, a motor grader, a forklift, a backhoe, and any other heavy piece of equipment for eighteen dollars an hour? You can't. And those people are dedicated employees, and the benefits and the raises that we give them are to try to keep them hooked. Try to keep them there. Try to keep them working. Because they can't take their skill set elsewhere. Now, every one of us runs a mini construction company. We manage half a million dollar budget each year, and our job is to make sure it's spent efficiently and wisely. So, yeah, we got a hundred dollar a month raise this year. We gave everybody a hundred dollar a month raise. But the least paid employee, that hundred dollars means more to them percentage-wise than it does to the higher paid employees. You know, here at Ford, we've been giving these three percent or five percent raises across the board. And we don't always get one. There's been years when we didn't have one. But that means that by giving us, that not giving a percentage and moving everybody up this way by giving a separate rate, the top folks don't get paid as much and the bottom folks get paid more as a percentage of their salary. And that was the thinking behind that raise. I mean, we got, you know. You look around at other counties. What do Archer County commissioners make? What do Stevens County commissioners make? I mean, it's, it's just kind of a standard salary. Everybody kind of makes that. But look at what we're doing to earn it. My guys out there run those machines. We earn the money. You know, whether you, whether you think we do it or not, that's, I can't change your mind there. When the, the buck stops right at precinct one, when it's involving precinct one, when those guys do a bad job, they don't call my hands to tell them they did a bad job. They call me. It's up to me to rectify. It's up to me to build your roads. It's up to me to make sure that everything is like it should be out there. And it's hard to do it with that kind of money. And our materials went up last year from almost seventy-five cents a ton. That doesn't sound like much unless you're buying a lot of tons. And all that has to be taken into consideration. I just covered five miles of road in blacktop. That was FEMA money that I worked and auditor's office worked our tails off to get for Young County. We had to jump through so many hoops. It was so involved, so much paperwork, but we finally got it. And it went on the roads in precinct one.
Okay, Commissioner. Uh, somebody else want to, want to say something out here?
Just a second, sir. Okay. Did you have a judge say something?
Good.
This guy.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know. I don't know. This, this is a time and place. I've recently been made GM at the Lockhead. We have the hotel tax, and that's fine. The paper reported we're the only ones paying it. Is that accurate?
You got, you got one other bed and breakfast in Young outside the city that makes, that's paying it.
Okay, which one's that?
Uh, B and B?
So, what's the, and the law is anybody that puts up lodging...
Anybody that rents rooms?
Takes more than two dollars. So, the honey ranches not falling to that?
Well, we're talking about the honey places.
No, I'm talking about the, the high fence ranches. Well, I think you should. I think the way I read the law, city favor, puts even lodging up should be entitled.
They charged by the nine, nine thirty, right?
Overnight lodging, over fifteen dollars a thing for upward. Like these two dollars, fifteen dollars and other places, fifteen dollars.
Yeah, thank you. That was police that.
We had one, one other, one other bed and breakfast thing on four, seven, eight, nine.
So, yeah, Hawkeye Ranch. Rivers West Ranch, Green Eagle Ranch, Volta Te Ranch. What about RV Parks? R and D Parks? No, I just, just wanted to make sure if it's, if it's for us, it'll be up the crossboard.
I'll be, the crossboard. I mean, part of the expanded tax base that we're working off of this year is because we found properties that weren't on the tax rolls. Nobody runs down to the courthouse and says, hey, you forgot me. You know, put me on the tax rolls. I want to pay taxes. But we found a bunch of that stuff, and if you got to pay... And those other places? They need to present us a form and a check every month. Thank you. Hope y'all are okay. The county, hope y'all are okay.
So, we all said that y'all were able, which is great, to find more taxable properties. So, if we've had increases in income coming in, and y'all were still able to, thankfully, most of y'all have budget left over by the tax increase?
Because of projected expenses for next year. The whole total was what I believe the judge read, it's three hundred and five thousand?
Three hundred and eight.
Three hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Right, and a hundred and eighty thousand of new income?
Yes.
Uh, a hundred and ninety-five.
So, really, we're taxing a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for...
One eighty-five, three and six.
Right, well, I mean, you'll still tax, but y'all should have excess this year, is what you're saying?
Yeah, there's, there's less burden on more people.
Okay.
It's a balanced budget. It's a balanced budget to bring in what we're spending.
When revenues increase, the remainder of that tax means, means your taxes increase.
So, based on the current budget next year, we shouldn't see a tax increase because y'all should have quite a bit left over now?
Oh, that would be pretty good. I know.
If you've already got excess this year, are you bringing in more? Y'all still...
Well, I, I don't know, know that, but, um, the history of the court has been, um, to tax need every year and not necessarily use fund balances for, um, any of the...
So, let me ask, is there a cap? When, I understand you have to have extra. Because you don't want to end up in a zero and have an emergency.
Yeah, goes in, goes in, goes in, goes in.
Yeah, you're required. You've got so much to continue. You want to pay something.
Right, I understand, and I understand that, you know, if we have quite a bit of tornadoes, then we have to have extra funds. But is there like a cap, like, okay, now we can say we have enough in our safety budget? Or is there, y'all just going to keep building the safety budget?
It's recommended from our association of counties and our judges and commissioners association to have three, six months, um, monthly, a monthly total of three, six months of revenue in, in, I guess you would say, to be able to accommodate some kind of...
So, at most financial...
Emergency or weather event or catastrophe or some unforeseen thing. Uh, there's, there's issues around that, I think, that, you know, I don't, I'm not necessarily telling you that we do it all correctly, but we probably have about three months of funds that will be held in reserve. What we call reserve, or there was kind of conditions, so it's...
For me, no.
I've been on this court when it had zero, none, um, many years ago, actually operating them. Current year, um, expenses on next year's tax revenue.
Yeah.
So, that's not a good thing.
No, it's not. And like I said, I was born and raised, I've seen, I mean, we lived out in the country my whole life, so seeing some county roads with some issues.
But that's only, that's only a recommendation.
Right, and she mentioned that we did not budget for that murder trial, which we knew was coming up, and we didn't raise the taxes to fund that murder trial, and it cost us two million dollars for that. We did not raise taxes. We didn't budget for it. We just used our reserves to pay the murder trial that caused the county two million dollars and didn't raise taxes at all.
And Anne makes a good point. I don't think people know too that when we do have murder trials, we all pay for it, you, me, but we have the budget. I'm not...
We did not budget.
Right, but what I'm saying, we have to pay for that, and I don't know if people realize that, and like she said, it's two million dollars.
Right.
Well, even if we did budget for it, we could have gone up high enough on taxes.
Oh.
The budget.
We're not, we're not going to budget two million dollars and have just charged you taxes on something that may not happen.
Right.
You know?
And I understand, I think, I think people are mad that, I mean, we understand stuff increases, we, I mean, we pay for stuff. I understand there's costs. But I think it's that collectively, and I'll just be all like we discussed, there's these increases and we're seeing, when we see leftover, and I understand y'all are saying, like, y'all can't have, you'll have to have three months, whatever. That's fine. We get that. But I think also, when you see like, okay, y'all have a crap ton of money left over, and we're barely making it as people in the community, like, I'm a full-time nursing student, plus I work, so, I mean, when my budget increases by a hundred dollars, it's detrimental in my household. So, and I mean, y'all are making fifty-six thousand, and that's great. Y'all got a hard job, but it's really frustrating for those of us that are not. And you're like, well, it's only a hundred dollars, but that's half my car payment.
A hundred dollars?
Well, but, and I mean, no offense, but that's kind of how you worded it, and I don't think you realize, like, a lot of people, we have a ton of senior citizens.
That what, that's only a hundred dollars?
Yeah, I mean, you kind of like, like, you didn't really think it was a big deal. There's a...
No, it's a great big deal.
We have a large amount of our community that's on a fixed budget. We have a huge senior citizens community here. That's grocery. That's medicine.
Sooner or later, you get some straw that breaks the camel's back.
No, and I understand that.
You know?
And we have to pay. I just think that, I, I hope that y'all look at, not everybody in this community is making fifty-six thousand and their car payment isn't paid, plus their salary, like...
The average person isn't like that.
No, and I know they don't. I know they don't. Even with the education, great, because the job market here is sad, but...
It is.
It is, and it's, it worries me when I hear, I mean, I've heard multiple people, this isn't just like one or two. I've had multiple people say, I'm selling my home. I can't afford it, or I wanted to move to Graham because they have a great community, but I can't afford to live there. And I know it's not all y'all, but it, it's an issue. And actually, the one that was looking to move here was looking for county, so it wouldn't have been city. They were looking out for county.
How is this person, has a master's degree and makes thirty-something thousand a month? Does she want to learn or...
Yeah, and I get that. I just think that, I, I hope y'all look at that when y'all are looking as far as the budget. I know y'all have to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And do we fund the county and help January, February with the tax money stress payment? So, we have to have that reserve so we can cover everything.
I would have thought so. When we had tax money that hadn't hit yet, and we were like... I worked at the hospital when we dealt with the, when we had tax money that hadn't hit yet and we were like, we still have expenses, but nothing's hit yet.
So we have to find all of our expenses, covering like everywhere.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else which, which please make any comments? I appreciate you folks coming. It's great to hear y'all. It really is. John, do you have anything you might like to say?
No, sir.
It's our chief deputy, John Orr.
Most chief deputy in Valphenomena?
He makes right at fifty-five, I think. Fifty-five, sixty thousand.
That's what you're making?
No, I'm making thirty-nine.
We lose a lot of deputies.
Well, we lose a lot of deputies. The city pays more than our county employees.
Our, our training grounds.
We are training grounds.
The city. Starting with this option, making more than sure.
Yeah, and they have, and I think that's definitely brought up, and I, no offense, y'all struggles is hard, but I think people are kind of offended when somebody that can be shot at makes twenty thousand less than y'all, like.
I wasn't the guy that got shot at. Trust me, I was the guy.
Yeah, I just, and I know there's.
I'm not sure I'm going to get shot at. And we should have checked if anybody was packing for y'all. Motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Thank y'all. You guys pass these along, please. And use that card.
I got two.
Send it to the governor. Thank you.
This is the one with the chain title.
Okay, and if there's been a hearing, if you folks before you leave, we're obligated at one point in time to take action on this budget and these tax rates. They have to be done in three different steps. We can make any adjustments in the budget that we think is necessary. I don't know what kind of might like, it kind of might be like making sausage sometime, do you? But I don't know what, what we're going to wind up doing here, so I can't tell you how long it will be. But it's still public. You're welcome to stay. Ten fifteen, no, ten forty-five. Close, you've got a person to say. Yep, we haven't voted on it yet. We haven't closed it officially.
That's why I'm sorry.
You confused your partner.
I'm good.
She is good. Question hasn't been called. Get that out to let everybody know that they're welcome to stay. There's not anything here that's being closed about yet. We have a motion by Commissioner Wiley and a second by Commissioner Rogers to close this public hearing. All in favor? Attorney five, zero. Okay, I'm sure. Is there any, is there any consideration on the budget that anybody in my life proposed? If there is none, then we have to have a motion. It's got to be on the record to adopt the budget. Is anybody willing to put their name on the record to adopt the budget?
I'll take that motion.
Okay, let's see. Says, after notice due to given and the manner for the time required in subsequent to the public hearing, as described below, the following motions were considered. We have a motion by Mike Sykes. Do you have a second?
No second.
Give me Wiley.
Let me say this about that comment. If we have actually done our job the way we're supposed to do our job and misscrutinized and discussed those numbers as we should have, then this should be a good budget for this county at this time.
Your move has been reported. There. Says, I like Sykes moved to adopt this budget in Young County, Texas, as presented this tenth day of September, twenty eighteen, and to become effective upon October the first, twenty eighteen, for the twenty eighteen nineteen budget year. The second was by Commissioner Jim Wiley. Starts with Commissioner Mike Sykes. Sykes, over you.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Matt Pruitt. Judge Sean Bullock, I'm going to be a nay.
Always.
Always. No, I believe I booked it last year's.
Okay.
I believe it's always a nay. Commissioner Stacy Rogers.
Nay.
A nay. Commissioner Jimmy Wiley.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make the comment then that there are raises. I believe the raises don't need to be completely across the board. So I don't think we need to raise one place and not the other, so that, that part of it I'm in favor of. I do believe the budget is extensive and increases too much. I believe we could have done it on the effective rate or less, but offered some tax relief. So I don't like the appropriations necessarily within the budget, so that's my reason. Not in the legal law either, but.
Let me, let me say this. If you looked at the list of salaries for elected officials, you'll see the judges' salaries supported also by the state of Texas, so it's somewhere in the seventies.
Yes, I get it. Something for Judas, for duties. Each county judge in the state does. They don't come from your tax dollars.
Somewhere down the road it doesn't.
Those don't come from your tax dollars. They come from fees.
But.
Criminal fees.
It has a whole lot of duties over here. It's the same about the raises.
He said he voted for the raises.
He did vote for them. But it's politically expedient voting.
I mean, I don't agree that on all, all the issues either. I don't think some of the places should have got money where they got, but we still have to pass a budget.
There's a settlement for the county judges on the criminal justice fees that they paid to pay the recorder.
Right. So, twelve hundred dollars.
No.
The next step in this process pursuant to one eleven point zero zero eight C, Texas Local Government Code, we have to ratify, we have to produce an order to ratify the tax increase for the twenty eighteen nineteen fiscal year. It says this budget will require raising more revenue from property taxes than the previous year. And I, with a motion, move to ratify the property, not a, but I'm taking this, move to ratify the property tax increase as reflected in the twenty eighteen nineteen adopted budget of Young County, Texas. And second, who's willing to offer that motion?
I'll take your motion.
Give me Wiley. Okay, who's willing to offer the second? If none other than I will, because we have to ratify that one budget. Is anybody else who wishes a second? Commissioner Juan Mike Sykes, my bookie.
Aye.
Commissioner Matt Pruitt?
Aye.
Being that I seconded the motion, I must. Commissioner Stacy Rogers.
Nay.